Call and order this meeting, the Weaver County Commissioners stated this the 8th of January 2019. We have a new body today, seated to my right is Commissioner Scott Jenkins, who was just installed. He filled the remainder of the term and has just started his first commission meeting for his full term now. And seated to my left is Commissioner Gage-Fror, who, this is his, he was inaugurated yesterday. And we welcome him both, we welcome both of them here today. Been, we had a great day yesterday, absolutely a phenomenal day. We went from one to another to another to another to another. Ended up meeting with all the mayors last night, it was ended up really being pretty good.
Full day.
Full day. We're going to start, Commissioners, today, instead of an invocation, start today with a moment of silence, remembering the family and Shinning from the Utah County and the Oran Police Department. Following that moment of silence, we'll have a pledge of allegiance by Mr. Duncan Olson, the Division Director of the Golden Spike Event Center. And then I'll go from there with the thought of the day. We'll do that moment of silence now. Thank you. Mr. Olson?
All rise. Repeat the pledge of allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The thought that I have today, Commissioners, is from Maria Robison. And it is this. And I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go a little further on this, just for a second. But nobody can go back and start a new beginning. But anyone can start today and make a new ending. And so that gives me hope. You know, as I, we've had a privilege of being able to say the pledge of allegiance several times in the last 24 hours. A dear friend shared with me Sylvia Salasberry, she's often here at our commission meetings. But she shared with me a couple of years ago punctuation regarding the pledge of allegiance. When you, and I've wanted to talk about this for a little bit of time. But a lot of times, we decide as a group, no matter where we are, when we say the pledge allegiance, to insert commas into that document by pausing. For instance, you can, most people say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag." There's no comma between allegiance and "to." It's "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America." "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America." All one sentence, no commas, no punctuation. And then the next one is "one nation," and oftentimes it's long. It's "one nation under God." "One nation under God," not "one nation," pause, wait, look around at your neighbor's shoes. "One nation under God." We do that very well here. But in other places, oftentimes, there's a pause. As I look at that thought today, we can start a new beginning. I hope that all of you will accept the challenge from me to change the way we say the pledge of allegiance and to say it correctly without added punctuation. So with all due respect, I'm gonna ask everyone in the room to stand one more time and say the pledge of allegiance correctly without commas. And with all due respect, Mr. Olson, will you lead us out loud and run us through the way it should be done?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For those in our audience who have come to address the commission over anything that might appear on today's agenda, we invite you to come forward and state your name and the city where you live. Your comments to three minutes. Do that now. None being heard? We'll move on, Commissioners, to item F on our agenda today, our consent items, which are as follows. Number one is a request for approval to ratify warrants 1646 through and including 1658 and 434-976 to 435-198 in the amount of $1,505,285.61 for the date of December 25, 2018, and 1659 and 435-199 through 435-416 in the amount of $504,159.13 for the date of January 1, 2019. Item two is a request for approval of warrants 1663 through and including 1664 and 435-417 to 435-566 in the amount of $2,350,472.49. Item three is a request for approval to ratify 2018 purchase orders in the amount of $46,699.63. Item four is a request for approval of 2019 purchase orders in the amount of $281,165.86. Item five is a request for approval of AHC payment to U.S. Bank in the amount of $142,219.49 for purchasing card transactions made through the billing cycle ending December 26, 2018. Item number six is a request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on December 18, 2018. Item number seven is a request for approval of new beer licenses. Item eight is a request to declare parcel number 010600041 as surplus property. Item number nine is a request for approval to sell surplus real property parcels 020030031 and 020030014. And item 10, consideration and action on a request to dedicate area from Hammond's Ranch subdivision to a Weaver County public right-of-way called Shaw Drive. Commissioners, entertain any comments regarding those consent items.
I got all kinds of questions.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Thank you. I went, I went over the bills with you guys this morning. And I do have a couple of other questions I forgot to ask. First one is $83,000 for Weaver Pathways, that's just an annual payment, isn't it?
I'm not sure that is, I can go back and check and find out more details on that one.
Ash, dang it, should I ask you that this morning when we met? And I forgot to ask that one.
I was gonna say it's for the funding of the Spanish maps, but I would have to confirm.
Not 83, that's only, that's only five or six grand.
Yeah, it was just five or 6,000. We give them money every year. And I really kinda think this is our annual payment to them. But I don't really know.
Commissioner? Mr. Wilkinson?
I can speak to that. This is basically a refund from money that UDOT has given to the county as part of a TAP grant. So that money went back to Weaver Pathways for work that they had done. And this is on the Wolf Creek to Eden pathway.
Right. All right, thank you. I, you know, you try to be aware of these large sums they're going through. So the second one I wanted to ask you about was 140,000 for housing payment to Weaver Housing Authority. Once again, I assume that's an annual payment? Ah, God, I should've asked you this before, that one had it covered, I'm sorry. I missed this page.
That's actually what, Commissioner, that falls in the other portfolio. But what little bit that I know about that is we make payments every now and again for reimbursement for Weaver Housing Authority, and that's what.
I assumed that's what that was. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Fror?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some questions on the surplus property approval.
Which one in particular?
Well, I really have questions on the process first, if we could deal with that first.
Okay.
So I'd like to know the process that, I'm understanding this was declared surplus, but the process then to consummate the sale. Number one, so I'm assuming this abided by state statute with the procurement code that this was offered to any municipality or other government first. So explain to me how this worked with the surplus property. I just have some concerns that anytime you deal with surplus property, and just for a little background for the audience, I dealt with this a great deal at the state with UDOT and DSCM, hundreds of, if not thousands of property. And it's a concern to me that we make sure that if we're selling these surplus properties, we're maximizing the dollars so those go back in the taxpayers' coffers and we don't unjustly enrich certain individuals. So I just wanna make sure we're following state statute, how the process works. And if you could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Mr. Wilkinson?
And we may have the attorneys jump in to this discussion as well. But the county is guided by a procurement code when we sell real property.
I'm assuming that follows state code.
I believe it does, and I'll let Chris speak to that.
Sure. The section of county ordinance that governs the disposal of surplus property is Section 2-21-2, which has the requirement that the county must receive at least fair market value in exchange for surplus property unless otherwise allowed by law. And then there is guidelines set forth as far as if it's a property below valued at less than 10,000, what kind of appraisal you have to have. If it's above 10,000, a certified appraisal. And then if it's a significant piece of real property valued at over $100,000, then there's a requirement for a public hearing. So yeah, there is a number of steps that have to be followed.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that. In fact, I think I wrote most of that code.
Yes, so that is the code that we follow. The first step in that process is that the property has to be brought to the county commission and declared surplus. So the property management team looks at that property, determines whether or not there is any need for the county or any public purpose that could be maximized by keeping that property. We make that determination, then bring it to the commission for a decision to declare it as surplus. Once the commission has declared the property as surplus, we have to wait at least two weeks so anyone in the public can give comment or provide any, any comments that they would like to. There's also a process that we follow in determining if there is a, someone that holds a preferential interest in the property, whether that's an adjoining property owner or someone that may have a claim on the property, anything like that. And those people would then be offered the property first. If no one has a preferential interest, the property can be offered to anyone. Usually, that is the person that has approached us about purchasing the property. We typically are not out-marketing property to sell unless it is a substantial piece of property. We have a few of those, but these are typically small pieces that the county has obtained through tax sale. So once we have gotten through the surplus portion of this process, we wait that two weeks. There, there's an agreement that is signed that releases the county from any liability associated with the property, and then it is sold. As far as the value goes, Mr. Crockett explained that correctly. If the value is less than $10,000 as determined by the assessor's office, that is the fair market value, and that's what we go with. If that value is determined to be over $10,000, we either have to get an appraisal or a letter from a real estate broker that determines the value.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. So just remind me again of what method you're using to inform the public, neighbors, et cetera, that that property's for sale?
Yeah.
Or has been declared, declared surplus?
Typically, that is through a let, well, it depends on whether there's a preferential interest in the property. And if there, if there is not a preferential interest, then we can just go ahead and sell that to the person that's asking. Typically, what we have done, though, is we will mail out a letter to all of the adjoining property owners and give them a chance to express some interest at all. If they do, we can go through a bid process. We haven't had to do that yet. I've always had just one owner interested, but that is the process that we follow.
And I like that last comment you made. The more information that the public can have, neighborhood, would save some potential conflict.
Correct.
Issues with the county down the road. So information and the ability for neighbors to, to be able to bid on that is never a bad idea.
We ran into that a little bit this last year with one piece of property, and we have done things differently, so.
And just to reconfirm, or so that we can state on the record, everything that we do is at minimum following the code the state has put out for us, correct?
Absolutely.
Are there any processes you see, Commissioner Fror, in moving forward that we should maybe change, look at, or adjust?
No, I appreciate that information, Sean. It looks like everything's, you know, in confirmation with state statute, which I appreciate very much. I like being in conformity with state statutes.
Yes.
Also, you know, again, I would just echo the thoughts that the more information we can give to the public so when these situations come about, it would probably behoove and help the county from potential conflicts or comments that we do have conflicts or preferential treatment.
Correct.
I just don't like the idea of helping somebody with the expense of somebody else. Everybody should have, be on an equal playing field.
And we rewrote the code just this last year. Courtland Erickson helped with that. And we did attempt to address that specific issue. We do property research, and if we can determine that a piece of property was formerly part of a larger piece of property, that is a preferential interest, we would then be able to solely give it to that person to make the property whole again. But otherwise, we should inform the local neighbors.
I have a comment regards to that. Thank you, Commissioner. I have a comment with that. And with respect to what Commissioner Fror has just spoken about, with attorney Chris, Courtland Erickson in the Civil Department with Chris Crockett, and what you've explained, Mr. Wilkinson, I'd like, I'd like your department, just so that we're making sure we're going above and beyond, what I'd like to do is, because we've had nearly 20,000 touches now with our social media, excuse me, I said 20,000, over 20 million touches with our social media, I would like to start a process by which we can, when we have these surplus properties, not just doing what you're already doing, but just add something simple that could be added to those social touches so people in everywhere across anywhere can have that same information. And maybe we can, you know, we have the right to sell it for a fair market value unless they get into a bidding opportunity. But I wanna maximize the potential for the Weaver County taxpayer. So would that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent idea, Mr. Chair. And, you know, we've made some changes at departments across the state that made that more available to members of the public in getting rid of excess properties. And, you know, I'm a believer that the more we can put these surplus properties in the hands of private individuals so they pay taxes, that's the best thing to do. But the wider net that we can cast, either through the web or other sources, I think that would benefit the county in a number of ways, not just monetarily, but also from a transparency issue that the, the public may have that we're making inside deals.
Sure.
Which we don't wanna see.
Yep, absolutely, support that. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jenkins, are there any other questions?
So Sean, as we go down through the list here, the very first one I see on number eight appears to be a very small sliver of property at the end of a parcel that's owned by a family trust.
Yes.
And Ogden City Corporation has the other end. And many times, when you have little pieces of property like this, they end up being heirs that were created 50 or 100 years back. They're, they're small, you know, this one here is 44 feet by, it looks like, two or three feet.
Yes.
And it just, it's exactly the same size as that piece of property.
Right.
So you could almost wonder if that wasn't some kind of a heir that was created years ago.
We have the surveyor's office research all of these property descriptions before we can sell them because we want to make sure it is a, an actual piece of property. They have reviewed it in this case and have told us it is a piece of property, it actually exists. Why it exists, I'm not 100% sure, but it is a viable piece of property.
Sure, and I understand that. And this, this just happens over the years. We've, over the years, as a mayor, I've dealt with this. And so I just wanted to make sure. And so I'm very much in favor of getting rid of this and, like Commissioner Fror says, getting it back on the tax rolls.
Yes.
So the next piece, I would like a little explanation on that one because that's considerably larger. It seems like we've gone over this once, but I don't have a clear recollection of that. Can you explain that to me?
On the, on number nine?
Uh huh.
Yeah, absolutely. These are two pieces of property that the county took at tax, or were struck off to the county at tax sale in 2015 and 2016. The buyer owns the piece of property directly to the north of these two pieces. They were at one time part of this overall larger piece. And he approached us about a month ago and asked if the county would be willing to sell these pieces of property to him so he could combine them with the piece he owns and make the parcel larger to build on.
Sure, makes perfectly good sense.
Correct. So that is, that is the process that we're going through now.
Very good.
And in this case, there was a preferential interest in that property.
You bet. I understand that. I just wanted to make sure how we acquired it and what happened there.
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of that one. Oh, and then number 10, I'd like an explanation of that one.
Rick, would you like to come up? Hammond's Ranch.
Yeah, Shaw Drive.
Yeah, I'd like that.
I'm not sure I totally understand that. It read through this. It appears that this ends up being a couple of little slivers to create that right-of-way. Am I right there?
You are, Commissioner. Yeah, there's.
I understood it right, I just wanted to make sure I did.
Yep.
Yeah, so you look at this where the road comes through, there's a sliver on the left and a sliver on the right that scores that road up.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
So just briefly, I know from, I'm gonna speak for the previous commissioner in your seat, Commissioner, but also Commissioner Jenkins, this commission body has a very focused interest in creating these public right-of-ways that are right next to or contiguous with county roads so that when growth happens, whether it's next year, next decade, or the next century, that we're doing the due diligence now to protect the public's interest in the future.
Correct. And also, the ordinance supports that in the subdivision section. So it requires that even a lot of records, that they're required to provide dedication, but then they enter into a deferral agreement. So at a later date, oftentimes, those improvements aren't warranted right then, but they enter into a deferral agreement that they will agree to pay for those improvements at such time.
Very good.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
One more second, please.
Okay.
If you'll hold that.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to know, you know, as I look at the plat here, how did this overlap or discrepancy take place when the original plat was recorded? Why was this allowed to be recorded?
Typically, the surveyors, they catch those things when, sometimes they do or they don't. In this situation, they didn't. This time, they caught it and were cleaning it up.
So this is just a cleanup?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, cleanup. And we, Commissioner, there are still hundreds, if not thousands, that have to be cleaned up. But the nice thing is, is we're catching them. And as we catch them, we're bringing, bringing them before this body to take care of it now.
This is a great thing to make sure that we get our records straight.
Absolutely.
In fact, I would think it would be tens of thousands of these kind of things.
It could be.
Yeah.
But you know what? One at a time, the nice thing is, is we're doing it.
We're taking little bites.
We're doing it, instead of just letting them sit, and we'll address that at another time. Commissioner Jenkins, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent items.
Great, I have a motion.
Second?
I have a second. I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those consent items pass unanimously. Commissioners, item G, like golf, will now move to item number one. Mr. Peterson, welcome. It's a memorandum regarding an understanding by and between Weaver County and the Utah Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Management, for the use of Weaver County resources. Sir?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Welcome, nice to see you, Lance.
Good to be seen. Thank you. Welcome aboard, Commissioner Gage, and welcome again, Scott. You have before you an MOU, a proposed MOU between the state and the county. The intent and general considerations in this MOU is to provide a mechanism where the state will be able to, during a disaster, utilize county property and, and facilities if they're available. And that's the key thing there. It outlines reimbursing Weaver County for any costs incurred in addition to a daily amount. Some of the responsibilities, the state would ensure that they clean up and restore the property and, and take care of general indoor housekeeping of the facility, if it's a facility or if it's a piece of ground for staging area. For federal or state resources, they would either restore the property or, or pay the county to restore the property to its pre-use condition. Also allows for a process here in, in the state utilizing our property. And there would be a pre- and post-use inspection report to, to basically try to alleviate any disputes as to far as the condition of the property before it was used by the state. But again, if it's available, and that's the consideration before you with this MOU.
Can you, just for sake of, just revisiting this just briefly, with your emergency management duties, we're fortunate to have some great public facilities here in the event of a huge natural disaster. Give us an example, for instance, the Ice Sheet or the Golden Spike Event Center, some of those buildings there. How would they be used in the event of a huge natural disaster so we get an idea? Or give an example?
There could be the, the use of, say, if it's available, the parking out at the Golden Spike, you know, especially that large area there on the west side, for staging of USAR teams, urban search and rescue teams, National Guard support teams, where they could set up their base of operations to help support us. So anything that they would bring in would be federal or state resources, whether it's hazmat teams from EPA or USAR teams from FEMA, or even DMAT teams, disaster medical teams that would come in from HHS. All of those types of heavy, large footprint kind of teams and resources could be set up out, out there or up at the Ice Sheet for, for housing or anything like that. Ice Sheet's not really quite on our radar screen for.
For housing?
Yeah.
But we do have it for some other necessary things if there were a mask.
Possibly, you bet.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioners, for Mr. Peterson?
Have one.
Please.
So Lance, this, this is a MOU that's been in place in the past. We're basically renewing it, aren't we?
No, no, this is brand new. Their logistics section approached us, and I believe they're approaching most of the counties along the Wasatch Front, part of some of the catastrophic earthquake planning that has been going on here in the state. But no, this is a brand new MOU that would, Brian Barron has worked up with their logistics people and the state AG representative to the Division of Emergency Management. And it's. And, uh, it's good for five years to, to be renewed at that time.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion, Commissioners. I'm not sure you have a question?
Don't. Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, Commissioner?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve this. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion one. Thank you, carries. Appreciate that moment. Go ahead. Commissioner Jenkins has asked for a moment.
Lance, the, uh, other day, I went to your hazmat training that you held at Ogden Regional.
Yes, thank you.
That's okay. I was impressed with that. That's a six-county operation, you said, and, uh?
Yes. Uh, we've been doing it since nineteen ninety-nine, um, and, uh, we're the only county that puts on that LAPC conference. We did it by ourselves for quite a few years. Davis County approached me a few years back, said, "Hey, can we do it with you?" We said, "You bet." And, um, we're, we're very collaborative-minded in emergency management. And, uh, so, a couple of years ago, we opened it up to the northern six counties. And, um, so we had about a hundred and ten, eleven people.
Sure.
At that. Yeah.
Well, I was impressed, uh, with what you're going over, the amount of attendance, uh, the preparation you're making, and.
Well, thank you for your opening remarks. They were spot, they were spot on. They were great.
Glad to do it, and, uh, it's, uh, interesting to watch you work and what you do, and I appreciate the preparation that you create.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Barron, Brian Barron from our Weber County Civil Attorney's Office has a request for approval of amendments to the contracts for the following indigent defense attorneys, Ammon Nelson, Jennifer Clark, Jonathan Pace, Mary Ann Ellis, and Richard Williams. Mr. Barron?
Good morning, Commissioners.
You do a good job with this, by the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your help on this. Uh, these amendments are coming before you for a couple of different reasons. Uh, first of all, uh, our indigent defense attorneys have a base amount that they're paid to cover certain assignments over the court. And then there are some additional assignments that need to be done, and they're paid fifty dollars an hour to cover those additional assignments. And we have an estimate as to how long those additional assignments take, and then that amount is added into the contract. Well, some of those amounts have changed, uh, and so, we're adjusting the contracts to reflect the, the new time commitment. The other reason the contracts are being amended, uh, dates back about a year and a half ago, when the juvenile court judges came to us and asked the county to provide indigent defense, uh, representation at the detention hearings. And we came up with a couple of different ideas, uh, ran it by the public defenders. They didn't like either of our ideas, and so they came up with their own, which was that each attorney would take one thousand two hundred dollars out of their contract and pay another attorney to provide that representation. And so, we amended all of their contracts last January and took that one thousand two hundred out and gave it to Mary Ann Ellis to provide that service. Well, in the, uh, budget hearing this, uh, past year, we agreed, uh, that we would put that one thousand two hundred dollars back into their contracts and that we would fund that service going forward. So, that's what this is doing. Uh, we're making some minor adjustments because of the time commitment on these contracts, and we're adding back in that one thousand two hundred dollars.
Commissioners, as, as the attorney is in my portfolio, I want to tell you that I am incredibly impressed with how fiduciarily responsible Mr. Barron is with taxpayer funds. He watches it like a ca- hawk. He's had experience in his previous life, uh, before he came to the county to do things just like this. He understands not just the nature of the business, but the numbers that surround the business. And I'm very impressed that he's so closely tied in, and myself can make a recommendation that we, uh, approve this request. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Absolutely.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. We'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two on the action items passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, very much. Mr. Olson, you're back with us today, and we have a request for approval of a contract binding between Weber County and the Rough Drafts Polka Band, LLC, for entertainment during the two thousand nineteen Hof German Fest. The dates of that are?
The eighteenth and nineteenth.
Of, so we're getting close.
Of January.
Uh-huh. Where will that be held, Mr. Olson?
The Golden Spike, the, on the fairgrounds. We're gonna be in the exhibit hall.
Very good. Go ahead with this.
We're super excited. Uh, this has been going on for thirty-three years. And the, the Rough Drafts are a band that, that are gonna bring a different style that, that kind of is contrast to the other bands that we've got, and we're excited to bring them on board.
Commissioners, this is a fantastic event, and according to the consul general out of Los Angeles, probably the most authentic German-like event of its kind. It doesn't go for six weeks like the ones we've been to in Orange County or in Washington. Although it's a two-day event, is very, very similar to the ones held in Deutschland. And so, this is a great event with another piece of live entertainment that'll be playing. While we have authentic food during that whole, that whole great party. What time does that, uh, HoFest start every day?
So, we get kicked off at eleven AM, um, both days, and we go till ten PM.
Right.
Both days. And the nice thing about this contract, as well as the other contracts with our, our musical entertainment, is it's not a one-time performance. We get them four or five times each throughout the two days.
So, this is money that the taxpayers are paying for, but we recoup this money through gate fees, through admission. So, this is an event while it's being produced by the county, really ends up not costing the county anything. In fact, it, it does fairly well.
Yeah.
And it's just another benefit for Wee, living in Weber County that doesn't cost the taxpayers really any money. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract, Commissioners.
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I've been rather long-winded today, sorry, but on number four?
One question on that.
Yep. Yes.
You, you mentioned food.
Food.
I'm assuming there'll be beverage at this.
There, there will be.
Event, too. If it's gonna be a true German, I would want to make sure we have beverage to entertain the Germans.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Golden Beverage and, um.
Wasatch.
Wasatch Distribution. They, they both are, are a part of it. They're both sponsors. Um, we'll have tons of good food, tons of good beverages.
Let's make it authentic. I appreciate that.
And they both have the necessary contracts with the, uh, providers or the makers of any flavors, uh, of different, uh, beverage.
Yeah, we bring in special.
But while you've mentioned just beverage, and beverage is one, we'll also have soda pop and other things. The great other things, though, that, of course, a guy my girth likes, is we have, there are fantastic artisan breads.
Yeah.
Along there, and fantastic German desserts.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good party.
It's really a great event.
It is.
So, we hope that everybody attends that. That's a good deal.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, while it's not always been consistent in the past, it's this chair's, um, wish, and while I have absolutely enjoyed being the chair of this commission, I think it's appropriate to rotate, uh, the chairs of this, this body. I've learned a great deal, and I appreciate by which you guys have taught me a lot of different things. I've learned especially, uh, in the last several months, that we don't necessarily always agree. But when we are done with the meeting, we do get along. And I've really, really enjoyed that. So, with that, um, I would like to, uh, take my place back as a, a commission and, and give another commissioner an opportunity to serve his chair. Uh, I think it's good form to rotate that annually. So, I would entertain a motion, uh, or, or discussion as it pertains to that.
Appreciate that. Uh, I'd like to make a motion and speak to that motion, if I might. So, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, Commissioner Jenkins take the chair for the next year, two thousand nineteen. And, uh, but I'd like to say, before we take a vote on that, uh, show my appreciation to Commissioner Harvey for what I consider to be an excellent job. I haven't been involved directly with the commission over the past year, but indirectly in some budget hearings and some other hearings. And, uh, he does a very excellent job running the commission, making sure the public has the opportunity to discuss. And, and for all the staff and Weber County employees that would, uh, have, uh, issues to be brought before this commission. So, I just want to give thanks to you, Commissioner Harvey, for what you've done as chair. That'd be my motion.
Boy, thank you. Thank you. Uh, to keep it, so I'll second that motion. Do you have any concerns with that, Commissioner?
No concerns. I want to, uh, echo what, uh, fellow Commissioner Faur said. You've done a really good job as a chair, and, uh, hopefully, you'll be around here in years to come, so you'll get a shot at this again. I appreciate working with you, and it's, uh, been enjoyable.
Hey, well, that's, boy, that's nice. Didn't expect that, but thank you. Well, with that, we have a motion and a second that Scott K. Jenkins become the chair for this body moving forward. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. This leaves a vacancy now as the vice chair of this commission and as, uh, uh, one of the voting members of this, uh, member. I would like to certainly lend my confidence to Commissioner Faur with his experience and everything that he's done. I'm excited to have, to learn. I'm excited to learn from him. And to continue the betterment of this county. He's, uh, it's amazing to see just how wide his, uh, his influence and friend base is throughout the county. I've always prided myself, uh, staying around a long time. And Gage, you've, you know, just, holy mackerel, a lot of people. And, uh, that comes from doing a lot of good for a lot of decades. And, uh, so with that, I would, Commissioner, unless there's an objection, I would like to recommend that, uh, Gage Faur be the vice chair of this body along with you.
That a recommendation or a motion?
Recommendation and a motion.
Oh, a motion. I'd second that motion.
Very good.
Thank you. I appreciate the remarks. Most of that, uh, friendship comes from old age, though, so I'll have to. Just been around a long time. But I do appreciate those comments.
Thank you. Well, with that, then, Commissioners, my, at, last act, and I'll, I'll make a, uh, a recommendation. We take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's great. Super. Commissioner, with that being said, I'm gonna tip the mic up and turn item number H, like hotel, over to you.
Thank you. I'll take that. Uh, you know, it's interesting, uh, you talk about the, how many friends you have, and old age brings them. I assume they're old friends, then? The goth old age.
Not, not all, but.
Yeah. I know what you mean. Anyway, it is good. So, Commissioner Commons, do either of you have anything you'd like to bring up? Commissioner Harvey?
You know, one thing, uh, I do want to make one comment. As we, as yesterday, we had an inauguration. I really thought it was really, uh, good form on you, Commissioner Faur, and you, Commissioner Jenkins, on the nice accolade that was paid to former Commissioner Ebert in his service here. He had genuine interest for the county's well-being in mind. He said the same thing behind a closed door that he said in public. He wasn't afraid to say something, you know, different. I appreciated that consistency. And, uh, I, I had no really, really much of a friendship with Commissioner Ebert, uh, before coming into office. I knew both of you before coming into office. But I was really, uh, I think my life's better because of the man I met while serving in this position, as many of you in this room. And I just wanted to, I wanted to thank my heavenly Father for that opportunity. I love getting to know good people. And those are my comments.
Very good. Uh, no others. We'll go ahead and, uh, I'm looking now for a motion to go to a closed session, so we can deal with, uh, uh, pending and imminent litigation.
So moved.
Second?
So, roll call, Commissioners. Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I, I did that backwards. That's all right. Commissioner, um, Faur?
Aye.
And Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
And I'll, I'll, yeah. Very good. With that in mind, then we'll adjourn to the room behind us.
I'm looking for a motion to, uh, reconvene.
So moved.
Second?
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Is there anything else to be brought forward? I see nothing.
Was there any action taken when we were in a closed session?
There was no action taken.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Harvey?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.